We're good, Ed.
All right. I don't have a thing. What is it? I don't know. Gavel's gone.
I see a hand, but one.
I don't know, here, we'll just. I'd like to call to order the September 23rd, 2025 Columbia Borough Council meeting. Could I have a roll call, please? Thank you.
Counselperson Murphy?
Here.
Counselperson Geezy?
Here.
Counselperson Fisher?
Here.
Counselperson Lagard?
Here.
Counselperson Stahl?
Here.
Counselperson Kaufman?
Here.
Counselperson President Dink?
Here.
Mayor Lutz?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Did anyone want to offer an invocation? If you'd like, please rise for a moment of silence. Mayor Lutz, would you like to do this in a pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I could pop where I was, so I just started. Announcement of executive session, there was none. Are there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda needed? Aware of anything. I know we have a few that's few corrections as we go through, but it doesn't need to be approved here. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
Motion by counselperson Kaufman, second by counselperson Geezy to approve the agenda as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? First item we have is a presentation by state Senator James Malone. He wanted to come and greet us and introduce himself, so.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, so I'm the senator for our 36th district. That's everything from Canoye all the way out to New Holland and Earl, up to Elizabeth Township, and all the way down to Columbia, Marietta, and that round. We have been kicking along. We've got a little less than 270,000 people in our district, if you can believe it, even with the wonderful work that all our municipalities are doing to preserve natural spaces and farmland. We are a growing area. I am available, my staff is available. We do a lot of constituent services work, so I wanted to be sure that that was out and presented. And we have not only the office in Lititz, 301 East Main Street, but we have some mobile office hours as well. And I am pulling those up because I get places and times wrong sometimes. And I do want to throw those out there. So here we go. We've got, of course, the office in Lititz. We have our office in Harrisburg, which is 184, right inside the Rotunda, turn left. We have West Hemfield Township building from 8:30 to 11:00 on the fourth Thursdays, the effort of public library on the second Tuesdays from 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, and Mount Joint Township building on the third Thursdays of the month from 8:30 to 11:30. And, you know, of course, we're always available by phone as well. And just wanted to be sure people knew. We wanted to be sure, you know, everyone here knew and, you know, be available. I will hang out for citizens' questions and what have you, and we'll leave our contact information on the table out where the agendas are, just in case a citizen or two, you know, needs to grab right away and might not have direct access to website or what have you. And, you know, open and available. Is there anything you all want to ask?
Eric, do you know if Michelle has included the senator in the ribbon cutting?
She can.
And I guess I'll have to get ahold of Paul Rash to make sure. We're having, Senator, we're having two ribbon cuttings on the 30th.
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. One's at 3:00. It's for Jansen Park. That's at Sixth and Cherry. And I don't know if you know Paul Rash or not, but Paul is on the Jansen Foundation. I think he's putting that together. And then immediately following, we're having another ribbon cutting at Maple Park, which is down on Corn Avenue, just off Fifth Street. And they're both funded by DCNR.
Okay.
And so we're having ribbon cutting on that, so I'll double check. And Eric's wife is doing the agenda for Maple Park.
Okay.
Parks and Rec Commission. So we'll make sure that you're at least receiving an invite to that.
Understood. That would be great.
I was talking to the folks from DCNR this morning, and I understand they're under a travel ban.
Correct, yeah. So we get some stuff worked out.
After they have a staff meeting, I think Thursday.
Right.
But our representatives from DCNR, you might know everybody.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Lori told me she'll be here, even if she has to drive.
Understood.
So she'll be here. I don't know that Deputy Secretary will be here or not, but more than likely not because of the.
Right.
Of the van.
Understood.
We'll see if you give an invite.
All right. Yeah, I'll do what I can to be here. Well, thank you very much.
Speaking of the travel ban, I would be remiss if I did not ask this. Here, what's going on with the budget? We got, we got, we got email from PennDOT that they're not funding projects and so forth. And as municipalities, we have, we have work going on that we count on their state dollars, and now everything's stopped. I mean, I know our school district is probably in the same situation, and Columbia can't afford to not have that state funding.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, that is the scenario with a great number of our school districts in our district. So, you know, we are continuing to push that we get something. The, the last official passage out of the Senate was to run a flat 2024 budget. So I don't know that that's gone anywhere. But we're still continuing to haggle back and forth with that at the upper levels, you know. I personally also have a few questions, you know, being brand new, coming in in May, why we aren't managing and taking care of our other committees? Because we're not all on appropriations. So, yeah. But hopefully, I know we're going, the president pro temp has called us back on the 3rd, October 3rd, which is great. It's a little bit earlier. But so far, they haven't communicated that we would have anything budget-related to answer to. So maybe by that following Monday, but I'm not sure at this point. The only thing I get from leadership from every angle and area, Republican, Democrat, administration, House and Senate, is that they're making progress. I don't know what that actually means, but we'll. Just figure honesty is the best way to go. But we will, you know, keep trying to push and see what we can get.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of frustrating sitting here as municipal official. And, I mean, we have rules, and if we don't, if we don't comply with the law and we don't file our budget by a certain time, then we get all of the letters from, you know, we get all the emails from the state, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. We're withholding the money yet.
No, I'm totally with you.
You know, it's the same. You know, it's very frustrating.
I can understand that, absolutely. So we'll, you know, keep trying to get something done, you know. But right now, we, I don't know what the progress is. So we'll see how it goes. Sorry, I don't have anything better.
That's okay, I get it.
But I may know.
I just, I, I knew I had to, I could not miss the opportunity to bring up that it is very frustrating that we still don't have a budget.
I appreciate that, absolutely.
Anything else from anyone, any questions? Thank you for coming in. It was nice to meet you guys. I have your card, and if I need anything, I'll let you know.
All right, well, thank you much.
Thank you. Citizen comment, non-agenda items only. The first sign up we have is Mary Wittenheiser.
Why do I always follow a tall person?
Okay. Mary, everyone you follow is always tall.
You got it, Heather, you got it. Okay, I'm, I want to try to address two issues here in this five minutes. So I want to make comments, I want to raise some questions. I'm not looking for answers tonight. Okay, River Park Parking, ordinance 719, was adopted May 12th, 2003. It was part, at that point, it was in the borough code in Article 2, Section 8714-1. With the recodification, it became Article 2, Section 20712. It is the very same ordinance. And the original ordinance, if we were to abide by the original ordinance, no vehicles, other than vehicles with a trailer, shall at any time be parked at such space it's so designated. There is nothing in this ordinance specifying Memorial Day to Labor Day. I know it was done. I know that we decided that that was not fair to the residents, to the users of that park, and that for the sake of the voters who do use it, that they could live with Memorial Day to Labor Day. I spent two hours going through River Park advisory notes, thinking that maybe this was something that happened after the building moved. But it was, it was not. This was 2003. This was the old parking lot. What you have down there was not open and dedicated until 2010. The building was not dedicated until 2014. If no one can find, I've, I've requested through a right to know, and Paul told me I will have them tomorrow, the minutes of that May meeting. I want to see what went down at that meeting. If there was supposed to be a change to that ordinance to address that issue, and if it did not happen then, I would strongly urge this council, we have all been living with it all these years, Memorial Day to Labor Day, that something be done to codify that, to make that a regulation on paper if we cannot find anything. Those are my comments regarding River Park Parking. Moving on. The Lancaster Water Company project on Manor Street. The word's gotten out, I've had, I'm starting to feel like Frank, people are talking to me. Why don't they come here? I've had people ask, were there any alternatives looked at? Do we not have a right to ask Lancaster City if they looked at any alternative other than tearing up Manor Street?
We did.
Manor Street, that's the bus route in and out of this borough. That bus route serves Wagon Works, Trinity House, St. Peters. The only street parallel, even for four blocks, are Central, Barber, and Grenelle. Central being the only one that would be able to handle bus traffic. Then you get into 10th, and you're back where you started from. I know the airfield is sacred ground right now, but was anything looked at to run through there?
Yes.
They, the impact on the fire company, what Jared Barninger brought out. My grandson's a volunteer fireman. Yeah, he's close enough, he can run to the firehouse. But have you ever been out there when the volunteers come in from all directions on their vehicles? All their personal equipment's in that firehouse. They, they don't all carry it in vehicles with them? The safety of this community is at stake. If that firehouse is not accessible to everybody, are they going to maintain a lane of traffic open while they're doing this? These are some, you know, these are the questions that people are asking. Is Lancaster going to hold a meeting with the residents of that area? Let them know what's happening? And the, the idea of them, you know, moving their vehicle, their work stuff, not going to make any difference when they're done at the end of the day. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Mary, let me comment on that. Matter of fact, on both things. I remember seeing something in writing, an ordinance on that River Park deal. Well, if you can't find it, I'm sure, but I remember seeing something in writing, in an ordinance fashion. But I don't have all the ordinances. You know, my thoughts are, it's done as an ordinance, but hasn't been sent to general codes to publish.
It's entirely possible. But I think if we could go back and at least look at some of the ordinances that may have been passed directly after that ordinance, 719, that you might be able to find that in the ordinance book, so.
Yeah, and as far as Manor Street, yeah, we've all been getting comments. That's, that's, I think, and I'll speak for the borough, that's our desire, that we sit down with Lancaster City and we do with them like we do any other project. We want to know the timelines, how they're going to do it, how they're going to, you know. The statement was made, once they put the pipe in, we would like to see them resurface both lanes of travel. You know, in other words, we want to ensure that everything, when it's all over and done with, Manor Street looks better than it does today.
But how do we live with it while they're doing it?
Well, they only, they're only going to be doing so much a day, and they, that's part of the discussion we want to have. And I, I made a statement just recently, I was talking with West Hemfield Township. I want to see a layout. I'll tell you, we've done it here. We put the prints out on the table on a Saturday morning or something, maybe out at the firehouse would be a perfect spot. Put the prints out on the table at the firehouse, invite the people to come in and take a look at it and ask questions prior to the final design. That's my wish. Hopefully, we can do it. Alternatives, it's Public Right Away, PUC, you know, they, they basically have us on the book. You know, we thought we could, they could run it parallel to the old one, they can't do that. Yeah, you know, but, no. I will work as hard as I can to ensure that the people know what's happening prior to it happening. Same thing with the firehouse. And I'm sure the seven people sitting up here feel exactly the same way, and our administration feels that way, too. We want to know what they're doing. So I'll get ahold of the mayor, talk to her, and see if we can set that up. I already talked to some of the other municipalities. And, and I, as a matter of fact, I asked, what day was that we were at that? It's Friday. Friday.
No.
We were at.
Thursday.
Thursday? And I was talking to the, to the township manager.
On Wednesday. Wednesday, yes.
I would like to see all the municipalities involved in this project sit down and have a meeting with, with the city so that we all know what we can expect in our municipality. Well, that's, that's part of that plan. As I say, stay tuned, we're going to work what we can do, what we can get done.
And the next sign up is Andrea Guskow.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was my fault.
Oh, yo, you guys signed in, okay.
Yeah.
My bad.
But she gets all due, Senator.
Yeah.
No, I just asked.
Okay. Is there any, is there anyone that wanted to speak that did not get a chance to sign up? Yes, Frank?
Good evening, you all. If nobody else will say it, Mary, I thank you for bringing your concerns to the meeting so they get discussed and maybe something comes out of it. I'm sitting over here, I look across, and I see Ron Yalst. I remember the day that you came to work in the borough. Now, we're going back a lot of years. Jack Lakey, you, and, and I followed your steps on up through. You, you came a long way. Ended up, I know one of the places ended up out in West Hemfield. And, and there's one thing there that I can't let go because every time I go out the Ironville Pike, your name usually comes up. The manholes are just atrocious. And I know it's over the, that's all over and done with, but they just, they just did a poor job. But anyway, it's, it's so good to see you. And, and I look forward to hearing how your job's going to adhere to the borough here. So I would hope that layout gets to be denied so we know really what's going on. But nice seeing you. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? No? Okay. Minutes for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for September 9th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by counselperson Kaufman, second by counselperson Stahl to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for September 9th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Presentation and acceptance of reports, community developments.
I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the zoning and planning reports for August 2025.
Any questions? All right. Finance reports, I would like to acknowledge receipt of the finance reports for August 2025. Are any questions on those?
And I'd like to point out one thing. We're 67% into the year, at least finances. Revenue is at 69%. Expenses are at 68% or something like 64%. We are right there in line with what we expected and projected. So I just wanted to point that out, that I know revenue's winding down and some major expenses are going to be coming in, but we're, as of August 30th, we're right in line where we're supposed to be. So. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the finance reports? And next, I'm going to have to defer to Jack for the amount, but I want to acknowledge receipt of the 2026 MMO. It's the minimum municipal obligation for the pension. The non-uniform amount is, what's the non-uniform amount? There was a correction made after I did.
The non-uniform amount is accurate.
The non-uniform amount is $91,539. And the uniform amount is $615,379. As per state regulations, the Borough Council has to be presented with the next, the coming year's MMO, and they have to acknowledge receipt of that by the end of September of the year. This is important because it actually, these are the numbers that will then, in turn, go on to, go on to the budget for the pension payouts. So. Any questions on the MMO? Safety and marketing, counselperson Lagard.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge a receipt of the public safety reports for Columbia Borough Police Department for August 2025, Columbia Borough Fire Department for August 2025, the EMS report for August 2025. Like to acknowledge receipt of the codes compliance report and condemnation report for August 2025. And if I may, President, may I comment on something outside of the reports?
Yes.
Okay. As I'm sure you've all heard, there was a tragic police shooting in North Cadore Township last week, where three officers lost their lives and a couple others wounded. Interestingly enough, our family has quite a few personal and familial connections with the officers that were involved, as well as my parents being just a stone's throw away from the location of that incident, just down the street from the farm where I grew up. I think it is appropriate that we, in public, recognize the service and the sacrifice of those officers killed and wounded in the line of duty, lest we, lest we forget the bravery and the dedication of our own borough officers in blue, as well as our fire department volunteers who put their lives on the line every day. Let us not become complacent in our gratefulness, thankfulness. That's all I have.
All right. Oh, did you acknowledge the code compliance?
I did.
All right. I did not do that, but that's good. Thank you very much. All right. Mayor Lutz?
Yeah. Picking up on what Todd said, immediately after that incident, Chief Browner and I had a conversation. And the conversation was about, well, about that incident, but also where do we stand as a department in training and preparedness for an incident like that? You know, you, you can never, you don't know what to expect. Everything's, every incident is a little different. But do, but do we have adequate training? And do we continue with adequate training? And are there, is there anything new out there that has come up in, in the training area that we can take advantage of so that, to ensure that our officers are protected as much as possible? And I think we're in pretty good shape. How do you feel, Chief?
I would agree with that, Mayor. We have taken great strides to improve our training. Our current training officers are actually spending a great deal more time with our officers, training them each year. As, as an example, we did a full day, a full eight-hour day with half the department out at the training center, doing low-light shooting, doing movement with a shield, a bulletproof shield. So these are things, you know, as far as officers entering a location, maybe a residence, to, to do a sweep, a safety sweep, what have you. So we are constantly working to improve those tactics that our officers use, you know, to keep themselves safe and to handle a situation.
Thank you, Chief. And one, one other item, Chief and I have talked about this. I was, I'm seeing, and was seeing, a lot of vehicles parked on the wrong side of the street. And it may be personal vehicles, it could be contractors or businesses. It seems like they have a thought in their mind right now that they can just pull down the street and go to the other side of the street and park, rather than go around the block. And that's illegal. And I asked Chief to, to speak to the officers and start cracking down on that. You know, I don't mind, especially the commercial vehicles, I don't mind the officer stopping and saying, hey, you need to turn his vehicle around and put it the right way so you don't have to cross lane of travel when you're pulling out. I don't have a problem, but if they refuse, or we see it again, we're gonna cite them. So that goes for commercial vehicles and, and private vehicles. It's, uh, I'll call it a bad habit. It's starting to get out of hand and we want to pull it back. And that's all I have, I'm afraid.
All right, down to action items. Do I have a motion to authorize the bill payments?
Second.
A motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Murphy to authorize the bill payments. Are there any questions, comments? Yes, Sharon?
Good evening. Um, I noticed that Mount Bethel and the Historic Society are both getting checks for five thousand each. And it used to be in the prior years, they would come here and make presentations, the organizations that were requesting, um, some funding. And I believe that stopped under manager stivers. They weren't coming anymore and giving us any.
That's not, no, we, we do have them. We do have them come in. And the money that is in the bill payments this time is the money that was allotted on the 2025 budget that we set at the end of last year. And in fact, the, um, the community organizations are coming in to the October workshop.
Okay, so they're coming in after they get the check?
No.
No, that would be next year, like last year.
This money, this money was already approved.
Okay, so now let me ask you this, though. So since the president of that Historic Society has been fired and banned from borough property, how does he come to request?
It's been worked out. He has, um.
I reached out to him, um, to extend an invitation to have him attend that meeting.
Okay.
On behalf of the Historic Preservation Society.
So does that mean the ban has been lifted from borough property?
For him to be here for that meeting, that, that does.
For just that meeting?
Yes.
And council's comfortable then giving a donation to, to an organization that the president is basically banned from? That is in your comfort zone. I'm just asking because it seems contradictory to the actions.
We haven't had that conversation yet because it comes up in the budget discussion. So that would be.
Just seemed contradictory to the action that was taken earlier this year against him. So, thank you.
Any?
It's against an individual, not an organization.
Right. All right. Are there any other questions on the bill payments? Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Murphy to authorize the bill payments. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-one, designating the bank signatories?
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Geezy to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-one. This is standard. We're adding, um, adding Jack, taking off Steve, um, I believe we're also taking off Michelle. Um, and we're also adding Ron as well. And Brian, yes, and Brian. Any questions? No, when, when we, yes, Frank? While he's walking up, I'll say that, um, once this is signed tonight, then I'll email it to the bank tomorrow with everyone's thing. So you'll all be getting, you'll get that. But get the email, you'll get the text, you know?
I've been around a long time and I always thought when someone, uh, gets these, uh, oaths of capacity, whatever you wanna call it, shouldn't they be sworn in? Shouldn't they take the oath of office?
I.
It's probably a question for our attorney.
I believe that, yeah, I don't, I don't, as far as the signatories for the bank, I don't think you are, that you are doing anything that would require anyone to be sworn in.
But we, we want them to hold the same standards as our, our other people that, that take that oath. It, it should go to them. Now, in Jack's case, he probably took it when he became chief. But to me, I've always thought we'd done that and we kinda got away from it.
I think just to be added as a signatory, I don't think, I mean, obviously, there are obviously lots of standards and things that have to be met. And those people have to follow those as far as people who have access to the money of the borough. But I don't think swearing them in as an official is, is necessary.
Well, I use that as an example. And they're into a lot of issues of what you're into, and we need to hold them to them same standards.
I think that's Borough Council's job to manage those people under the oath that they've all taken, rather than the manager.
So you're saying, no, you're not going to do that?
There, there's nothing.
Don't look at the mayor.
Well, no, I'm just.
I can do it. He can do it.
I don't.
Yeah, but he didn't do it, so why look at him?
Are there, is there any other, is there any other comment about this, Frank?
No, are you, you, that's where you wanna let it?
Does anyone have any questions, comments? And, oh, Ron, I'm gonna have to make sure I have your cell phone number. And then I'll probably use the borough manager email for him and your Braumer Jay for you. That way it's separate. All right. I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Geezy to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-one, designating the bank signatories. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, next, uh, could I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-three, designating Jack Braumer as the Borough Secretary Treasurer?
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Geezy to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-three. This is needed because under the Borough Code, um, we have to have a Borough Secretary and Treasurer named. So this is fulfilling that requirement. Any other questions?
Just a comment, and a comment back to the previous question. Those people involved in that are bonded to ensure, you know, that things are done right and, and according to, to law. So there is bonding that secure, that provides security to the borough and actually to the employee too.
Any question, any other questions, comments? Now, I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Geezy to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-three, designating Jack Braumer as the Borough Secretary and Treasurer. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, um, I am going to leave the amount out of this. We are asked to approve the processing, um, of a contract change order number one and also change order number two, correct, Derek?
It's a, it's one change order and then an application for payment.
An application for payment, uh, for the nine-hundred, ten-hundred block of Walnut CDBG project. And I believe there was a change. So I'm gonna have Derek walk us through this so I can get the amount for the motion.
Yeah, sorry. My apologies. We have a slight increase on this project since we processed the paperwork last week. Uh, the contractor was out working, uh, yesterday, actually, today and yesterday. We ended up needing the course of additional sidewalk that we didn't factor on last week. We're still in very good shape budget-wise, but it added about eighteen hundred dollars to the price of the project. So what I am asking for tonight is our change order one, which is our balancing change order for this project. All the pluses, all the negatives, all the way down through. Uh, it is a change in price of negative twenty-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars. I'm asking for a motion to approve that change order for the contract decrees.
Oh, I have them both in together.
All right, we can do both if you'd like. That's fine.
So, and then what's the application for payment?
With that negative twenty-five, in twenty-five, two oh five, your application for payment amount is now two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven forty-six and eighty-seven cents. We are still holding five percent retained on the project and a portion of the finished grading and seeding since they just got the cops with them. Uh, so I would anticipate next, uh, your next business meeting, I'll be in with the final application for payment to close this completely out. This is the final number. We just have to pay the remaining next month.
Are there any questions?
Well, Derek, I was wondering, is it because that work isn't necessary or originally you thought it needed to be done and then once they dealt in?
Correct. Whenever, whenever we put contracts out on a unit price basis like this, we always do it with estimated quantities. So I estimate the square feet of sidewalk, tonnage of asphalt, uh, the square feet of base repair, for instance, we might get into. Then once we actually get in and build the thing, we're using rulers and material slips and verifying quantities as they go down. I always try to make sure we have a little bit of extra quantity in case we wanna go a little further, we're running into an issue. So I always try to overestimate rather than underestimate. In this case, this project went very well. The sub-base of the street was in great shape. Um, so it needed little to no base repair. That was a big savings. Um, and we ended up being able to keep the handicap ramps pretty tight. Sometimes when we put ramps in, you've gotta chase them for a while to get them compliant. So we were able to reduce the amount of sidewalk we needed to use on this project by keeping the handicap ramps a little tighter to the corners. So all, all good news.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any further questions on this? Could I have a motion to approve processing contract change order number one and the application for final, uh, application for payment number two in the amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents for the nine-hundred, ten-hundred block of Walnut Street CDBG project?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the, uh, contract change order number one and the application for payment number two in the amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve the application for payment number two for the eight-hundred block of Chestnut Street for twenty-one thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars and sixteen cents?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the application for payment number two for the eight-hundred block of Chestnut Street, twenty-one thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars and sixteen cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And, uh, could I have a motion to approve the application for payment number two to Iron Eagle Excavating in the amount of ninety-two thousand, uh, five hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-four cents for the, um, McGinnis Innovation Park project?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the application for payment to Iron Eagle. Are there any questions? And you all got the, um, update on the project. It's moving right along and there's no cause for concern that it were off our timeline. I have a motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve application for payment number two to Iron Eagle Excavating in the amount of ninety-two thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-four cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, uh, we're asked to adopt ordinance nine sixty-three of twenty twenty-five, granting the Commonwealth Financing Agency a mortgage on the property located at ten twenty Manor Street. As mentioned at the last, um, meeting, this was one of those things we found out we had to do to comply with the LEEDDA. So, um, we have to adopt this ordinance so we can get closed on BIOS. Are there any questions? There was, there was a, we had the ordinance all done and then Evan called me at like, at.
It was four-thirty on Friday.
It was like, he called me at four oh five. It was like, can we hold the packet for a minute? I have to, we have to redo these. We have to redo these ordinances.
Couple of changes that specifically on the, the next one that, uh, that could, but BIOS focused on. But yes, this is an important one. Just to, to get you closed, it was something that they decided after meeting, uh, the Commonwealth Financing Authority with DCV and people that are administering the LEEDDA approval needed this. So that's what we're gonna do.
Are there any questions? Leo, we'll need you to sign this tonight then, so I can, so we can email it to them tomorrow.
Do you wanna just sign?
No.
It is, yes.
All right.
Fifty-page document.
Yes.
All right, so do I have a motion to adopt ordinance nine sixty-three of twenty twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilperson Stahl and a second by Councilperson Kaufman to adopt ordinance nine sixty-three of twenty twenty-five, granting the Commonwealth Financing Agency a mortgage on the property located at ten twenty Manor Street. Could I have a roll call, please? Councilperson Geezy?
Yes.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Councilperson Bregard?
Yes.
Councilperson Kaufman?
Yes.
Councilperson Stahl?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Zane? Yes. Thank you. And next we have, um, ordinance nine sixty-four of twenty twenty-five. This is actually making changes to the nine sixty, the ordinance nine sixty-two that we did a couple of, uh, couple of meetings ago. There were some changes that needed to be done. So that is basically making those changes to repeal that previous ordinance.
Most importantly, requiring the principal be restarted to be repaid no later than two years from the date of the project. Which, with your plan, hopefully that doesn't become any type of issue, but we've gotta have that in there to meet the requirements of, uh, look, I'm repeating that.
Are there any questions? Now, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance nine sixty-four of twenty twenty-five, authorizing the issuance of a general obligation note in the amount of five million, twenty-eight thousand, thirty dollars?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman to adopt ordinance nine sixty-four of twenty twenty-five. Could I have a roll call, please? Councilperson Kaufman?
Yes.
Councilperson Stahl?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Geezy?
Yes.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Councilperson Bregard?
Yes.
Councilperson Zane? Yes. All right, yeah, we, we'll make sure we get those all signed tonight so that you can get them up there.
There will be an advertisement that appears in the paper tomorrow, um, regarding the passage of, of this that we also have to send. But we will get it's appearing tomorrow, so, um, we will, we'll have that.
All right, and I'm not available for closing on Friday, but any other day I am.
Got you. Perfect.
I'm doing water pour. All right. Um, new business. Next we have Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, designating, uh, September fifteenth as Lloyd Mifflin Day in the Borough of Columbia. This was proposed by, um, a citizen through Councilperson Murphy. He called me and said, can we do this? And I was like, I don't see why not. So we're up, we're up the resolution. And, um, we can, we can adopt this to, uh, make it official.
Basically, this will be, you know, a, an ongoing thing every year. Uh, I was contacted by Mr. Jerry Musser, who's, uh, represents the Lloyd Mifflin Society, and they would like to have this become known as every, every, every. who's, uh, represents the Lloyd Mifflin Society and they would like to have this become known as every, every, every September fifteenth. Sorry, we just missed this year's, but every Sept, every September fifteenth will be Lloyd Mifflin, known as Lloyd Mifflin Day in Columbia. And they want to, obviously, starting with next year, have some events around the town commemorating what he is, his, his life and his career in Columbia.
Yeah, Kelly, because of some computer issues, I got this information a little too late to do the proclamation, but, but that would be my intent also. And if I can, if I can legally do that, put a proclamation out that designating September fifteenth as Lloyd Mifflin Day in Columbia Borough, indefinitely, we'll do that.
Perfect.
Kelly, can I ask what the date? If the date has any significance?
Yes, it is his birthday.
Do you know, the school does a celebration every year too?
Yes.
On that date.
Is it September fifteenth?
Yeah, yeah, in the cemetery.
Payment, payment of one red root.
School's back in, school's back in, I guess. I guess so, this time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, they have someone that, um, that reads some of his work.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I think I did that when I was in school. I think I was one of the readers.
Yeah, I just tried, I was just wanting to make sure it was all coinciding together.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Great. Does anyone have a problem voting on this one tonight? Alright, could I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two?
So moved.
Second. Motion by councilperson Murphy, second by councilperson Geezy to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two designating September fifteenth as Lloyd Mifflin Day in the borough of Columbia. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, I received email and I put the email in, um, in the packet. I didn't get the amount, so I couldn't, um, do a resolution, but if we're okay with, with this, um, I will have the official resolution for the fire department at the next meeting. We are asked to support the fire department in their LSA grant application. This is just like we do with the Watching Clock Museum. But in order to do that, we have to have a resolution with that amount. And Jared did get me the amount. Scott, yeah, do you wanna? Yeah, I got that. I got the email. I think it was like late Friday night and I was like, what?
Well, there was an addition to it, so it's actually good. He didn't.
Oh, good, yeah.
So, uh, Jared apologizes. He's, uh, under the weather the last few days, so he's not gonna make it this evening. But I actually author the grants, so, uh, Jared and I have been working on this together. So, as council president Zink said, we're, the fire company's looking to, uh, submit, uh, an LSA grant under DCD. Uh, we're looking to do that under the statewide program. Those applications are due, uh, November thirtieth. And as you're probably aware from other projects, we are, as a fire company, uh, we are an eligible company. We are not an eligible applicant. You are the applicant as the borough. So that requires a, a resolution and you to approve it and, and all that. So, a little bit about what we're looking to do, and this is more Matt and the trustees and, you know, than my aspect of it. But essentially, uh, we're looking to completely overhaul and rehab what many of you would call the bingo hall, fundraising hall, banquet hall, whatever you want to refer to. Uh, obviously, it's been a number of years since anything's been done in there. We're gonna actually, uh, block up some of that front. Uh, we would be, uh, changing the entrance in and out of that. So the entrance would, uh, end up having like a breezeway and be moved to the side of the building. Uh, we have some, some safety concerns over the years that, for those of you that have been out there, if there's an event going on and then there's a fire call, uh, our personnel are coming in and attempting to park, uh, potentially in the front of that hall where you could have folks traversing in and out to smoke or to leave and come and go or whatever. So, so we're trying to alleviate some of those things, some general upgrades. There's some infrastructure things like sewer pipe underground and various things like that. Uh, and then ultimately what just, uh, ended up coming in this week is then the final quote to, if we're gonna do all that and it all works out, then we would also completely redo the parking lot because some of that would end up being disturbed anyway to do that construction. So, the total number, if we were to do all of that, now comes out to eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents. Eight hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents. And if you're not familiar, you're eligible to apply for up to one million dollars under, under that program. May or may not get that all, but, you know, it fits within the, um, the eligible. So, we understand that the way the program works, that it would, we would not find out till sometime this time next year. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a year wait. Uh, but, uh, and we also understand that this particular program has a history of, uh, they may not fund that all. They may come back and offer us some lesser amount of funding and, uh, you know, we've had those discussions as well and obviously we'll then address whatever they'd be willing to give us and do what we can and determine if we would put other monies to it and things like that. So, uh, so we have the quotes. We're, we're ready to go. I'm writing a whole bunch of these, so I'm very familiar with how it works. So, but obviously, we need council's support before we could, uh, ultimately do it.
Do you want, do you want me to email? Because like I said, we, we've done these multiple times. So I have a resolution that I can change the information on and be done. I, you know what I mean? So I can do that if you want. I can email it before the next council meeting, just so you can look at it to make sure that
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm totally fine. You know, as you're probably aware, DCD provides a sample, but if you changed that and used it in other times and they've accepted that, I, as long as they're gonna accept it, I, it doesn't matter to me.
I mean, basically, it'll be changing the amount
Yeah.
and your organization name, like all of those things, but everything else, it's the boilerplate.
Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm totally fine if you, yeah, obviously, if you've used it for other projects, they, then it's probably similar to the sample, I assume, that they provided anyway, so.
And the fire department is aware, if we do this, then when you are submitting payment requests, we would have to sign them here and then you submit them and then the check gets sent here and we would turn around and write the check to the fire department.
Y- yes, yeah. I don't know if they're all familiar with that, but I am, yes. I know that's the case. And I'm also, the question already come up. I'm well aware it would have to be a prevailing wage project. That state rules. So, and there's just no other, no other way around that. Uh, and we have factored that into the, uh, to the quotes that we have, so. Yes. So, yeah, in, in terms of timing, we're, you know, we're, we're certainly fine that it gets approved at whatever your next meeting is, you know, we're just kind of looking for that you're aware of it and hopefully you support it. And as long as we know the document's gonna arrive, that we can get it filed before November thirtieth, then we're, we're fine. So.
Does anyone have any questions, comments?
Only question would be, are, would you be looking at potentially applying for funding for the future ladder truck through this program as well and a future application?
It's possible. We did, uh, we did certainly. We have a, we have a grants committee and we have gotten some smaller grants this year already and we're, we're, have a whole longer list that we're always applying for. Uh, and we did this year weigh the pros and cons of, do we request LSA monies for, for the ladder truck or do we? One of the things in the grant world for fire companies is, uh, there's not, there's, there's very minimal opportunities out there to request funds for building infrastructure. Most, most grant programs on the fire side don't want to do that. So the fact that while the ladder truck is ordered, uh, it's gonna take approximately four years for it to come in. And the way that deal is structured, we have not, uh, put any money down on that. So as long as we don't put any money down, we are still LSA eligible under that. And so we feel that this is the higher priority right now. If this were to fund, there is a possibility we could turn around next year and look for ladder truck funds, but we haven't, you know, discussed that, but we haven't ruled it out either.
Yeah, that's, that's the, the tough thing with this funding stream is that you can't expend any money towards the project before,
Correct.
before not only you have put the application in, but until you've heard about the, until you've gotten the approval. So they would have to sit on that, the need for the ladder truck for, you know, over a year while the costs go up, waiting to hear. So that's why that's.
But did I understand that the ladder truck is agreed upon?
Correct.
So that's set. Now, the issue is the expend, the expenditure of the LSA grant has to happen within three years, I think, of having received it. So, whether that could be how you play that in terms of what year you apply
Right.
for it, for the truck. But Derek, if I'm not mistaken, they do like funding equipment purchases. So, just to keep that in mind, I think
Right.
it's a viable, uh.
And, and to your point, we've, I've looked at that whole timeline because you're right, it, it would just be tricky as to, and we have the deal structured with the manufacturer of the fire truck, that there's a lot of different payment options there. And, uh, so again, we have not at this point put any funds down on it. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts there and we have a, you know, a couple of different tentative plans of how that's all gonna work out, but, you know, depending, it, it could go a lot of different ways depending on how some of that comes about. But, uh, uh, but yeah, it is agreed upon and ordered and all that, but that's kind of why we decided to go this way with the LSA for this year. See what happens, see what we can get because, you know, obviously, if we can fix the infrastructure things of building, you know, it'll allow us to, uh, you know, offer a nicer haul, which will probably potentially, you know, more income or, which is all then in the end going to support the purchase of the ladder truck. So, it's, it's a number of moving parts there, but, uh,
Understood.
that's the plan.
Uh, my only other question, and I think this has been answered before, but, uh, if, if we as a borough want to apply and one of the things on our radar is possibly a new, uh, street sweeper to apply for LSA funds for that, is sponsoring another applicant, does that affect our chances of of getting any money through that program?
No, because we did the same thing. We did the same thing this year. We applied for money for Columbia Crossing and the Watching Clock Museum in the scene.
Did we hear back from any of that yet from last year?
No, last year's, last year's application.
Okay. Should be, should be coming soon.
Anytime.
Yeah, usually they give us a month. They'll announce it and then we can figure out whether you want to go back after.
But do you?
I just don't, you can, the borough can submit multiple applications, but there are, there's no published like scoring for these, you know, you, you don't know where you ranked, how you did, can you get multiple shore?
Right.
It's
Right.
I think it's the merit of the application and ultimately working with your local legislators to try to support your application.
Yeah, I'm dealing with a number of municipalities where they're, they're supporting multiple applications and putting in their own. And in some cases, they're putting in multiple applications and supporting their own. And so it, it doesn't, and I've, I've verified that with LSA and to Derek's point, LSA says you can put in as many as you want and their position is one doesn't affect the other. So I think it's, you're, you're selling the merits of your project and they're gonna decide what they're gonna decide. So, yeah, that's, that's what it sounds to me like, so.
Yes, Frank.
Would this grant be any type of matching grant?
It is not.
It's not.
It is not. Now, it, it could be, you know, in other words, if, if LSA comes out and says, well, we have five hundred thousand dollars for you and the fire company decides, well, we want to do it all and we're gonna put in the other three, you know, it could be, but it's not required to be. So that, that would be something that would get decided at the end.
This money comes from the gambling, the casino
Yeah, I wish we were in an LS four county, but we're not. So we have to go in the, uh, we have to go in the statewide, but that has its pros and cons too, so, um.
Any other questions? Does anyone have a problem? Doing this? Is there any concerns? Can I bring this back to the next meeting with the resolution to vote on? Alright, yep, I'll do that. And then I'll, I'll email. Once I get the resolution done, I'll email it to Jared. So just let him know then if he wants to eyeball it and make sure, you know, there's nothing he wanted changed or whatever, let him know.
Okay. Um, yeah, great. Thank you. We appreciate that. Could I, would it be okay if I just take two minutes here and update you on the convention and the parade that the fire company is also working on? Can I do that? Okay. So, um, this is all just the preliminary plan. Uh, we actually have, our next meeting is tomorrow night. Uh, so the convention, which ultimately is the parade, uh, the convention is, uh, held under the auspice of the Lancaster County Firemen's Association. Historically, they always hold that event the first Saturday in June. So that would be June sixth of twenty twenty-six. Okay, that's the date we're looking at. Because it is the County Firemen's Association event, there's a number of standard things that happen. So, a- again, an overview, we would, uh, kick off the, that Saturday morning with a memorial service. It is part of what is done. We are, we have secured the church catty corner across from the fire company there to, that's where we would hold the memorial service. Uh, there's also then an award ceremony that goes on after that. We would bring that back over to the, the fire company. So we would have the award ceremony and then the, uh, County Firemen's Association holds their annual meeting. So that would all occur in our social hall there at the firehouse. Meanwhile, while that's all going on in the morning, we would have fire trucks and everything arriving to town for the parade. We haven't lined all this up yet, but again, this is the preliminary plan is, this is what we did when we did this before. We would ask the school district if we can use the high school to what we call prejudge, judge the, the fire trucks as they come in and get ready for the parade. So you need like some open space to do that. So they go up there, they do that, assuming the school approves it. Uh, we would be planning to use the standard parade route, you know, the Halloween parade route. Now, again, I'm not gonna get back into what we're all aware of, the water project and all that. Obviously, we're gonna have to see what we can do, but, uh, but we would propose to use that route. So as they would get judged and things, they would come down and line up in the normal streets that we would use for the Halloween parade. We'd start there at the firehouse. So the meeting occurs in the morning at the firehouse. Then there's a little luncheon. And historically, the firemen's parades, the LCFA parades, they kick off at two PM. Then there's a little luncheon and historically the firemen's parades, the LCFA parades, they kick off at 2:00 PM. So we would look to start a parade at 2:00 PM. Um, then again, all this is still up in the air. We're still having lots of meetings. But what we're hoping to do then is post parade. Put together some type of family focused, community focused event. That might include like food trucks and things like that where we would then give away the awards. That folks have won in the parade and things. Again, preliminarily, we're talking about approaching Gladefellers, seeing if we can potentially do something there. Uh, starting to talk to some other community groups of, you know, how many other people could we involve in this? And so a lot of details to work out yet. Again, we're in the, we're in the early stages. Another meeting tomorrow night, but that's kind of a high level view of where we're at right now and what we're, what we're thinking. And what we're trying to work out and, you know, so we're still open to ideas and suggestions, but. That's, that's kind of where we're headed. So I thought while I was going to be here tonight, I'd just update on everybody on that.
You know, it may behoove us for next year if we start thinking about an alternate parade route just for next year.
I forget when, but I know there was a year or a few years back that we had to do that. We had to have a Auburn parade route.
I, I remember when I was in school, we always had, we had two. We had the Halloween parade route and then we had the Memorial Day parade route that went down Chestnut Street.
Yeah. Obviously we're going to have to, you know, none of us here tonight.
No, but it maybe behooves us to, to think about that and start prepping for that for next year.
Yes.
I mean, not that any of us really want that, but I don't think we're going to have a choice. So.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Um, next, we are asked to consider approval for Just One More Film LLC. To use a portion of the River Park parking lot to film a scene for a movie on Friday, October 3rd. Beginning at 4:00 PM until Saturday, October 4th at 5:30 AM.
Madam President.
Yes.
The applicant and Mike Mizel would like to address counsel for this matter.
Hello. Uh, my name is Brett Sfeizer. I am the line producer of Just One More. Um. Couple of months back, when the directors were looking to shoot this film. They wanted to do the whole thing in the Penn State region. And most of the crew is from Lancaster County. I convinced the directors just to kind of look around the river area and, uh. They really liked what they saw. And so we pivoted our last week of filming to places in the area. And one of those places was, uh, by the river crossing, the parking lot. It's just beautiful looking out at the bridge, uh, into the water and, uh. We decided we had to have it. So, um. Just, what was it? Last, last Tuesday was I down here? Um, I didn't realize that this was, was happening and I had to rush down from Penn State. Uh, on our second day of shooting, we're shooting right now in Tyrone, which I will have to get back up there. We will be filming until 1:00 AM, lucky me. Uh, but, um. It's a good project. It's about, um. It's about helping people, uh, with addiction, trying to get, kick their addictions, kick their habits. And, um. We also just wanted to give back to the community and, uh. Hire people like Mike to cater for the, uh, for the crew and, um. And use his facilities as a base of operations if we are allowed to shoot in that parking lot. And that parking lot scene in particular is, um, is one where our lead character. Uh, meets a Bible study group and, uh, she considers. Considers learning more about, um, kicking her bad habits. So, um, it's a good scene. Film in the area. There's no stunts or any crazy fireworks or anything like that.
Oh, man.
Well, maybe we can write.
Yeah, break that in. I'll come down.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. The directors originally wanted fireworks. We're low budget. We're, we can't afford that, but, uh, you know, maybe next time. So, yeah.
Do you have a rain date? What if we have bad weather at that point?
Yeah, um, we do not at the moment. Um. With films, it gets quite hairy with, with trying to. We work 12 to 14 hour days normally. Um, and we have a lot of moving pieces. Last night, I can tell you that we were shooting at a church. And we were supposed to do an outdoor scene, uh, page, page and a half. Which takes about an hour and a half to do outside, to light it properly and set up the shot. And I don't know, it probably hit down here, but there was just lightning everywhere. It was a pretty big storm. And when it's inside of a 10 mile radius, we don't allow any crew to go outside. Uh, we have to shut off our generators and, and everything like that, just to be safe. We don't want anybody to get hurt. And our directors came up with shooting the scene instead of outside the parking lot. To shoot inside, uh, the front of the church and they were, uh. Uh. Rehab scenes. So we were able to figure something out on the fly. Wouldn't be the first time I've seen this happen. I myself have had to rewrite scenes. On a plane while flying to a set that was previously going to shoot a baseball scene and we had to do it inside. Things get tricky. Um. That was the long version of. I hope it doesn't rain, but, um, because we will most likely move or lose some crew members to other jobs. Because our cutoff date was the third and fourth.
So you'll be here rain or shine? Now that was the question.
Yes.
Right. You won't come last minute. Hey, we need another day. No.
If that happens and we'll speak to that, but if that happens, we would have to figure something out. A lot of further future, come back for paid shots with. I guess, apply for another application at that point.
Anyone have questions?
Mike just wanted to comment about the impact on the community.
Yeah, I just wanted to be here, put a face to it. Uh, the night of, you know, I'll be down there the entire time, um, hosting. But it also gives an opportunity to, um, serve them Monday through Thursday as well on different sites. So we'll be able to cater breakfast and lunch to the crew and then also have our facilities available Friday. So. And the rain, we have a really good indoor spot. At Calhoun, very good. So we will be here.
This, this event, I'll call it an event, is kind of a marketing piece for the community. And there was a discussion about rain date. Is there some way? And will I have to make another application or something like that? There is some way we can structure this that. Here's the date and if, if, if there's a reason for a rain, let, let us know what date it is.
Yeah.
So they don't have to go through all the times asking. And we're welcoming these folks in the community.
Oh, yeah. I absolutely think we can do that.
Uh, and we can put anything, uh, it'd be special thanks and the vote credits, you know, for Borough and whatever else.
Anyone have any questions, concerns? Anyone have problems voting? All right. Do I have a motion to approve, uh, Just One More Film LLC to use a portion of the River Park parking lot? To film a scene for a movie on Friday, October 3rd, beginning at 4:00 PM until Saturday, October 4th at 5:30 AM.
Senator.
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Fisher, second by Councilperson Brookard, um, to approve the facilities use request. All in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. There we go.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mary Chan. I need to get that one. Thank you, Mary. Drive safely. Thank you. I will let our director.
Uh, and next we have the public security. Um, we're asked to set the public security for the, uh. Rivertown Estates project in the amount of $190,004.10. Derek, is there anything you wanted to add? I mean, this is pretty standard. We do these.
Correct. Yeah, this will cover all of the public improvements on the site. Main public improvement you'll be seeing is a slight widening of, uh, Ninth Street from the property. And curve the sidewalk along there too, to kind of kickstart our future streets project there. I'll thank the developer and our engineer. They've worked very closely with us to get that street alignment correct. So that we're in, in, in line whenever the street gets worked on in the future. So I think that.
Any questions? Anyone have a problem voting on this one tonight? No, but I have a motion to establish public security for the Rivertown Estates project in the amount of $190,004.10. Motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman to establish the public security for Rivertown Estates. All in favor.
Aye.
Oh, yep.
Um, we have a question. Um, good evening. Thank you for, uh, everybody for considering this, um. This approval. Uh, so Derek, just curious if you could run, um, like quickly through the process of how this works, uh, for the, for the security.
Sure. So the, the $190,004.10 needs to be provided to the borough in, for, I'll say acceptable with a solicitor. Uh, typically it's in a, an actual security bond or a letter of credit. Um, you could also provide a check if, if you so choose. Um, as, so that needs to be provided prior to the beginning of the project, prior to the plan for course. As the project progresses, um, as you install items that are covered on the security bond. You can request reductions of the bond. Uh, we will process those at meetings at your, at your request. You can request as many as you'd like. Um, we'll come out, we'll do an inspection, I'll make a recommendation to the borough council for a reduction. And we'll release improvements as they get done, or you can choose to wait till the end and we do one big reduction and we release the bond.
Great. And then when do we get a copy of the items, uh, that are going to be like part of the bond?
Um, if you did not receive that yet, I'm pretty sure we sent that out to Josh or there was an email that was sent earlier this week. This email said either yesterday or late last week, just acquiring the process. I'm pretty sure we responded to that with a copy of it. If not.
It could be, I was, uh, I haven't received that yet.
Or the problem.
I'm sure they, they have it and I'll just inquire with.
Can I send you an email, Eli? Is that the easiest or what's the best way to get it over?
Uh, just send it to me directly. That would be great.
Well, you can tell me afterwards. So you don't have to tell the public. I'll email it to you right now and walk over.
Any other comments on this? No. Um, then I have a motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman to establish the public security. For Rivertown Estates project in the amount of $190,004.10. All in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. And next we also have the public security for the Lancaster County Land Bank. South Fifth Street Avenue K Project, um, in the amount of $57,934.80. Is there any questions on this one? No. Um, so anyone have a problem voting on this one? No. Could I have a motion to establish the public security for Lancaster County Land Bank, South Fifth Street Avenue K Project? In the amount of $57,934.80. A motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Kaufman. Um, to establish the public security for Lancaster County Land Bank, South Fifth Street Avenue K Project in the amount of $57,934.80. All in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And along on this one, um. We are also asked to consider a recreation fee waiver for, um, for this project. Um. In, in Columbia Borough Code, in the zoning code, in the zoning.
Saldo.
Saldo, it says that, um, I'm trying to, I'm pulling it up here. It says that, um, all plans for residential subdivision of land or residential land development. Shall provide for the dedication of land for park or opens and open space uses and/or. Upon agreement by the applicant, the construction of recreation facilities. The payment of fees in lieu thereof, or the private reservation of land, or any combination thereof. So basically if they do not have, there, there's a, um. There's a formula for how much land needs to be dedicated for parks and open space in the Saldo. And if it's not, they can pay a fee to, um, to the borough. And if they do, that money is held, um, in escrow to be used for the borough parks and open spaces. We have been asked to waive that fee for the land bank. I believe in the past, uh, I mean, we've, we've waived that fee for. For the, both the habitat. Both habitat projects. Um. And we have collected it in other cases, um, but since this is a land bank project.
How much?
I don't.
So this has, I'll, I'll speak to this a little bit.
Thank you. Cause I, I.
I've been through a few of these now. Um. Your ordinance bases the fee on the fair market value of an acre of land, which makes it incredibly difficult. For, for your engineer and staff to, to manage this. Um, so what we've done in the past. And what we actually did for Rivertown, he's actually looking right here for what the number is. Um, it, it's a negotiation is what it has been. Uh, so Rivertown, I think they're paying $1,500.
I was just asking Derek for ballpark so that if we do vote to waive it. That it's, it's public knowledge of what we waive.
Yes, sure. Well, that's what I wanted to pick up. So the only other one I can think of that we negotiated on was the, um. Senior living project that hasn't been started yet. Out on Thirteenth Street. That was the last time we had a, a housing development. I think you've actually collected this.
Well, there, there were two.
$1,500 per unit is what the, uh, is what Eli's project is looking to pay the boroughs. So 13,500 total is his fee for the, for the units he's putting.
Shouldn't we have like a.
There you have four units going in.
That's 6,000 now.
Shouldn't we have like a resolution or something that has that amount in our packet?
I, I, I would recommend it's something we work on moving forward is if, uh, every view of fever. I would recommend it's something we work on moving forward, is if, if you do a fee resolution, I don't, probably have to amend, or we have to amend the saldo. It would be great to have it in your fee schedule.
Well, and also, the other thing, like I know before, I don't think the other ones came before council. The habitat ones, I don't know that they came before council.
That was also another gray area we've had, is the planning, Mary's here tonight. The planning commission, we've kind of questioned their authority on this one.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of it relates back to a comparable being like a demolition permit.
Right.
This is a financial decision, which is why we bring the public security to council. So it would be, it would be more streamlined if we could do this at PC, but the planning commission really questioned whether they had the authority to do so or not.
Yeah, I think, what I was getting at is I think we need to, we need to decide where that falls and do whatever we need to do to make sure that it follows the same process every time.
I think you also need to track, to set that up, that if you're going to do that, set it up that you're going to collect these fees, then there should be a place where those fees go.
There is a place.
And it should be earmarked to recreation.
There is, there is a separate account, there is a, there is a separate bank account that was opened with money from the last two times that it was collected.
But what I mean is, the, any ordinance has to designate, it goes there.
Well, yeah, that's what this does, this ordinance does designate that it goes to the Parks and Rec. And the bank account is actually called the Parks and Rec account. So, I mean, and honestly, the easiest way, the easiest thing at this point is, we know we have to, we have to use, we're using some of our money for Make-A-Park, so we should use that money for Make-A-L. That way, it's, it's used for, we know it's used for the parks. Because it was, the money that's in there now is, I think, from 315 and down there.
Right.
Yeah. So. Any questions? Anyone have a problem voting on this one, didn't they?
I was just gonna say, shouldn't we have an amount, like, and a resolution with that amount so that it's recorded?
I mean, I don't know that it.
The amount that we waived?
I don't know that it matters.
I think, as far as this, this situation right now, I think you can, just a motion is okay. I don't think you need to have a written resolution. I think Derek's absolutely correct, that if you decide to set the fee at what you have been charging people, which is $1,500 a unit, that you put that in your fee resolution, and maybe amend the saldo to take that, kind of the vagueness out of what's written there. But I think for this situation, I think you can, you can just make a motion, it's absolutely fine.
I think what Pete's asking now, or stating is, we're voting to waive something. The general public doesn't know what we're waiving, we're just waiving money like.
The reality, but the reality is that the money hasn't been set.
Right, and what Pete's saying is set the money, put it in this motion, and then vote on it.
Exactly.
So how many units are out there? Four? Four, so four units, so what, $6,000?
I mean, I would say, if you're gonna wait to amend the saldo, you could be easily three to four months before you, because that's gotta go through.
Well, no, we just said it right now. I mean, if it's, if that's what we are.
Yeah, you're just setting it so that there's a line in the sand, you know, you're gonna waive it. Right?
Well, I don't want somebody watching us tonight saying they just waived $10 million they were supposed to get. Because it will happen.
So what we, what we would like to say is that we are being asked to grant a recreation fee waiver in the amount of $6,000 for the land bank, for the Langston County Land Bank, South Fifth Street Avenue K Project.
May I ask you a question? I don't understand the rationale for the waiving the fee. Can you explain that to me? Why does the land bank, what determines whether you pay the fee or you don't have to pay the fee?
Well, the.
Nonprofit.
We did it for.
Mary said nonprofit.
Yes, non-profit, they're nonprofits.
I want to understand the rationale. I understand that as well.
There's nothing written, but there isn't anything written in your ordinance that says nonprofit doesn't pay, profit does. I want to be clear on that. The ordinance is, you pay per unit. In the past, the borough has waived fees for nonprofits doing projects in the borough, similar to habitat.
But at the end of the day, those properties are going to be owned by homeowner, right?
It depends.
It depends?
It depends. This one on Fifth Street isn't, it's going to be owned by the land bank. They're gonna be.
And managed, and rentals.
Does that, does that mean they will not pay property taxes?
No, they will.
Okay.
They will, because that, that's the way it's structured.
Whether somebody pays property taxes isn't determined by their taxing status, but by the use of.
Okay.
Yeah, because if they're making money on the property, they have to pay taxes on it.
I'm just not, I'm just not into giving up revenue.
I mean, the other aspect of that is, I mean, we, if we need money for our parks and our, and our, those aspects of our community, and we're waiving that fee, it doesn't, we end up having to pull that from other sources, from our other taxpayers.
To me, it doesn't make sense logically.
For the increased use, I mean, we want people to move into these properties, so those properties are contributing to the neighborhood in terms of people here using our parks.
I'll say the land bank is an extension of Columbia Borough. So I think that's the difference there. Land Bank has a committee with Columbia Borough. They operate solely for the benefit of Columbia Boroughs, in Columbia Borough. It's just, we're so small.
They do not, don't they, they work with other, they partner with other municipalities? And didn't we, didn't we fund them like a lot? And didn't, didn't some of those monies go out of the coffers for Columbia Borough to fund other projects outside of the borough?
No.
No, it's all accounted for.
Okay.
But what I was gonna say was, because all the municipalities in Langston County are small, they can't operate their own land bank by itself. This is a county-wide land bank that all municipalities are involved in. But it is an extension for Columbia Borough to be able to use its function. So it's not like it's an outside organization asking for relief. It's us asking for relief.
In a roundabout way, if you require the fee, you're gonna pay money to yourself.
Yeah.
At least you know where it came from, where it's going.
So my question is, if this is a nonprofit, why are they collecting rents? Aren't they making money off this property?
No, they're not making money.
They're not, no, they're gonna lose money on this property, Barb. The funding stream that they used to acquire these properties and that is being used to build them, and that has, that was used for the demolition, the funding stream is specific to rental properties. They, I mean, when they were talking about building these properties, this project is, is over a $2 million project. They would have to sell them for, for well over $250,000 each.
I think it was $550 each.
Or five, yeah, $550 each.
Okay, I get it.
So they're, they're not gonna make money on this.
So the $6,000 is basically just a little bit more relief for them? Is that how you're seeing it?
Yes.
One thing, to be clear, like the land bank authority is not just a nonprofit, it is a governmental entity as well. And I think that, like this is, you know, you're not, this is a governmental, another governmental entity. So I think that takes it near to a different category.
Thank you for explaining that all to me.
Any questions? Does anyone have a problem voting? No, did anyone want to make a motion to grant the recreation fee waiver, the amount of $6,000 for the Langston County Land Bank, South Fifth Street Avenue K Project?
Seven.
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stahl to grant the fee waiver. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, I had on here to discuss the RFP process for the McGinnis site disposition. We wanted to introduce this this evening, as we've been working on this with the EDC, try and come up with a solution that complies with not just the letter, but the spirit of the law. We don't want to skirt the law as we're going through here. And Evan, do you want to?
I can certainly elaborate.
Yes, please.
We had discussions all through this project with the EDC about, about using them to sell or market the property in some capacity, given that obviously there is an exception in the bidding requirements in Pennsylvania if the sale of the property is to a redevelopment authority or a nonprofit that's engaged in economic development services. So in talking to them, in talking to their attorneys, the way that they feel most comfortable potentially doing that would be to have the EDC act as, as a marketing consultant essentially for the borough to get this, this project and its specifications out to as many people as possible, and to help us design a, essentially a request for proposals wherein, you know, there would be certain, certain ways that you guys could take a look at the proposed projects that people will be bringing forward, and then make a decision based upon the price that was bid, as well as however else you would define what a responsive bidder is. You have obviously set some parameters by making the changes to the zoning ordinance that you did. I think you have to recognize as well that if you are, if your off-ramp is after this phase one of developing, you are, you are likely not going to be able to have as much control as maybe you would like over what goes in as the end product. Right, it's not gonna quite be like the Turkey Hill experience. You can certainly ask for people to provide you with plans and things like that, but really what you're looking at is, does this comply with the zoning and other requirements that we have? Does it fit within that? And can, you know, and are they the highest? Are they giving us the best price for that property to get the, you know, the best return on investment for the taxpayers? I think it is a good, a good use of the EDC's expertise, and it definitely, you know, I have no problems with the way it would comply with the bidding requirements in Pennsylvania. Because really, you wouldn't even be using that exception for nonprofits that are engaged in the economic development sector to do that. So just wanted to present that to you, see what you, your thoughts are on that. I'm hoping that John B. Miller and I have had some, some problems connecting over the last couple of days to discuss this a little bit further, but I'm hoping tomorrow I'll get a chance to talk to him. But just wanted to present that to you and get all of your thoughts on it, because I know it is slightly different than what we had discussed previously, but I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
So, let me understand this. Instead of us transferring the property to the EDC and them selling it, they want to be a consultant on how to sell it?
Correct, yes, and then to bring, to market the property, to bring in, this would likely involve a much longer period of the bid being open so that potential, potential buyers would have time to do their own due diligence on the property before they submitted a bid. So you might be talking, you know, put the bid out in November, December after you have, you know, finished phase one, and then the bid might be due in June or July of '26. Give, give all those potential bidders time to do, like I said, do their due diligence, because that's, that's really the only way that you are going to get at your, one, at your bids and the number of bids. What was discussed at our meeting the other day was that if you don't give potential bidders a long enough time period to do their due diligence on the site. Now, granted, a lot of the due diligence that most developers would want to look at has been done already, right? You have done all of the environmental stuff, probably more so than what a lot of developers would do. You know, you're gonna know at the end of phase one, the, what the geotechnical status of all of the soils and the base is gonna be out there, which is really important to people. And then it becomes a matter of, can they do what they like on the property based upon your zoning and your saldo? But I think it's important in talking with Rick Brenneman, what he said is, if you don't give potential developers a long enough time period to figure out whether they can do what they want to do, and get the financing to do what they want to do at the site, you're likely gonna lose a lot of those high-end bidders, which is really what you'd like, you know, obviously, you know, we have an idea of what, what you'd like to get for the property, and we want to get as close to that number.
And, yeah, that, like what he said is, when we talk about due diligence, it's, like I haven't alluded to, it's kind of different than the due diligence we did before we purchased it in terms of the environmental studies and everything. The due diligence would be a developer figuring out, do they have, do they have people that they can put into, into that space? Is there, do they have someone that can use it? And the example Rick Brenneman gave us was, you know, he was involved with the Belmont project. They didn't, they didn't break ground on that project until they had 80% of the spaces filled. So that, that would be part of it, is running those pro forma's and making sure that they were able to fill the space and things like that. Because the other, the other risk that we run into with not having a long enough RFP process, not only would it result in lower bids, but it would also result in, it could possibly result in the winning bid getting the property and then not using it for an extended period of time because they were trying to do that due diligence after the fact. And then if they can't do it, then it, then it transfers hands again and all of that stuff, which is another thing we wanted, is we want it used, you know, sooner rather than later, so.
The financing package alone will take considerable time. That project, you're just not gonna go to the bank and get it on the next month.
Right, and, you know, like we said, the, the biggest risk of, of having that short time is that you're gonna have someone that'll say, oh, well, I'll give you, you know, 3.5 million and be done, and that's not anywhere close to, you know, what you should be able to get, so.
So I have a question, how, like, if it would go till June or July, you know, how much due diligence is a potential buyer gonna actually put in in terms of end user if they don't know that they're getting it? In other words, I, I agree, I agree in giving time for due diligence, but if it's too much time, there's still only a certain amount that a bidder's gonna do ahead of time, knowing that it would be a waste of money and time if they don't own the property.
I mean, it's definitely advanced, and it's, it's where we have to make sure that we are hitting that sweet spot in terms of, you know, too long versus too short.
You can request, you can request, I'll say, a contingency to hold the property while they do the due diligence. And if they back out, you get that money. You can do that.
I mean, we would prefer that they do their due diligence before we sell it, rather than, you don't want to have to go through the bidding process again.
Well, but they, Rick also said that that's part of it is, you know, part of the, part of what they, that could be requested is in the RFP, we can stipulate and say, after successful bid, we want closing within X amount of time. We can make it shorter or longer or whatever. And at that point, we can say, we can say, we want the deposit and if they don't comply, if we don't go to closing by the time, then we keep the money, but.
I think you let EDC come up with an RFP, then you review it.
I think, I would say, I think.
And that's kind of where we were, but we want to make sure that we make it, and this was another thing that we had talked about and Rick had talked about, is kind of that art of making it restrictive enough to get a qualified bid, but not too restrictive that someone's going to look at it and say, I'm not doing all of this work.
One of the things that, and we'll let them come up with the RFP, but I would see it as being, you know, sometimes properties get put on auction. This is the date of the auction, but we reserve the right to sell it beforehand. So if there could be somehow in the RFP that if there's a qualified plan and bidder that comes forward before that cutoff date, that the borough would say, wow, we got our money, this is a good plan, could that be built into that?
I don't know that it can because of the way the borough code is written.
So everything has to be received and then review them all at once.
You put this, does this mention, you put this out for, if you don't do the RFP, you put this out for auction, you're going to wind up, there's a good chance you're going to wind up with someone buying the property at a lower price and sitting on it.
Yep.
I wasn't saying to put it on auction, to be clear.
Well, you mentioned the word auction.
I said, in a similar fashion, but I was corrected. That's not, all the bids have to come in. I, you know, I just want to find the sweet spot so that it's not sitting too long either, on either side.
Yep, I mean, that's, I think that's where, and the other, one of the other things we talked about is putting in the RFP, putting a clause that if there is a commercial realtor, they would get, you know, an X percentage, you know, an X percent commission for bringing that successful bid in as well. Because that way, when the EDC is reaching out and they're spreading the word that we have this out there, you have a realtor that's like, oh, hey, if I'm working with these developers, you know, I could get some kickback here on this.
Exactly the scenario that was shared with me by a realtor, that would need to happen in order for them to bring qualified projects to the table. They have them.
And hopefully the EDC has.
Right, and yeah, that's.
A pool.
Well, the EDC has their contacts, they know of, you know, people looking for property and things like that, so. But yeah, I mean, that's definitely something we would want. I personally would suggest that we put in there is a commission for commercial realtors that are bringing it. We will also have to, I think we, the payment for the EDC is in that as well.
Yeah, which would be one person, it's pretty much what they said earlier, which is 1% of the purchase price and up to $2,000 a month in their consulting services. So, and I think they really bring a lot of value and will bring a lot of value in helping us get an RFP that will work for this situation because it is not going to be a simple one. It's going to be, doing the RFP right is going to be the most important thing, getting the most out of this property and avoiding as far as bidding futures. That is right and that it brings the right people.
Yep.
Our goal is tax collection. It's not the sale of property. Our goal to sell the property should be to break even at minimum, but start generating taxes as soon as possible. Two months ago, I asked about why we're not up for sales as it is at that point. Now we need two months and now you're saying June of next year. I don't think that's acceptable. I really don't. If you're concerned about people not getting 80%, 50%, looking at financing and anything else, then that property could have been available for them to start that months ago. This is too long a process, it's taken way too long. If our total costs are $5 million and as long as we can sell $5 million, that's my biggest concern, I want to break even on the project at a minimum. The most important thing and the whole reason we bought this property was for tax generation. The longer we sit back and wait, the worse it's going to go.
Not necessarily.
Oh, 100% necessary.
No, not necessarily. Just what we just talked about. You can sell it at auction, get $5 million for it wherever you're breaking even and it can sit.
It's still going to be taxed, it's still a property being taxed.
But it's going to be taxed at, you'll put it in clean green and you'll get, and you'll get a.
And you'll get $3,000 like we've been.
And it is to get buildings on that property as quickly as possible. That's where your tax.
That's where your money comes in.
And that is not going to be, I mean, as we sat here and talked last week, that is not, you know, that's not a short process either because just going through the EDC permits itself would take 18 months or something like that. Yeah, so, you know, it is, it is a process, but your goal should be to get buildings up and infrastructure in as quickly as possible out there once you've gotten rid of the property because that's where your tax money is going to come from.
So you're saying the risk management here is take your time with the RFP in order to get a good project that's going to start generating tax dollars as soon as possible because they're going to break ground as soon as possible versus getting it sold as quick as possible without having, with having a potential of it sitting dormant for a long period of time, not generating any tax. So you're saying slow down and hurry up is what you're kind of saying. Well, as soon as they break ground, your taxes start going up.
Right.
And they continue to, well, as the development happens.
Yeah, I'll add to something just because I, Rick, Rick, you know, meeting, I don't think specifically said, but we talked about the due diligence phase and the potential that you could go into a sales agreement, provide a due diligence phase, deal falls through, get under another agreement, due diligence phase, deal falls through. That, there is that potential to happen. With this model, it's the due diligence phase upfront, under agreement, deal should go. You don't want to, you don't want to enter into an agreement quickly and provide the developer time to figure this out, give them the time to figure it out and they shouldn't have any reason not to close and move forward. That's the idea. Or, or you have, you figured out A can't work, you go write to developer B and say, hey, remember that due diligence you did? Would you be willing to jump on now because A's backing out? You'll have a list of people looking to be ready to go instead of people jumping into something and then trying to figure it out. And again, I'll say, I'm not a real estate expert. None of us are, we're taking counsel from Rick Brenneman and people at the EDC.
Developers that people that do this.
That they're giving us, that we're passing on here.
And I will say, as part of that RFP, we would require, I think, a lot of documentation upfront, for instance, a commitment letter from some type of lending institution if they needed it or some show of a performance bond essentially to make sure that they have their financing lined up in whatever, whatever manner that looks like. But so that way, that doesn't become an issue. We can take care of a lot of those dangers upfront and potentially, I don't, I don't know, I'll have to discuss this with John B. Miller or maybe some other people, but potentially a developer's agreement that would require them to break ground in some certain reasonable amount of time, you know? So obviously that's not five days after the bid is accepted or anything, but require them to put some timelines on it and not allow it to just sit out there for sure. So I think that's, that's the way that we can help protect the borough and help get you to that tax generation revenue that you're looking to.
Yeah, I think we were saying that it would be like 12 months or 15 months to break ground after settlement.
How long will the EDC have to come up with an RFP and put that out there?
I think the goal is to start working on that now and have that ready to go. I would say.
The 14th.
Yeah.
They, everyone knows that we want it to, the council to approve on the 14th.
Of October.
Okay.
Yep, that was, because we spent a lot of time figuring out when the meetings were in October and we were going to try and rush something for tonight, but we said no, let's introduce it and then we're going to.
You're talking our agreement with them.
Yes.
But I'm saying the RFP, how much time do they have to put the RFP out to?
We're already working on figuring that out.
Yeah, I would think that you would want to have, obviously make sure that this phase one is going well, which it seems to be, but I would say either just before or, you know, at the end of this phase one where you know exactly what the condition of the soils are out there, you've gotten all of your final reports and everything from the contractor that you can say, here's what we have to offer you. And then you get that out there right away. So you can start that, like I said, six to nine months as soon as possible. So maybe November, you know, middle to end of November, something like that.
Any other questions? If anyone has any thoughts of what they want, you know, would like to see in an RFP, you know, let me know, let Evan know, so we can get that written. And we'll be bringing an agreement, I saw, we'll be bringing an agreement to the 14th.
Heather, just so I understand, are we turning this over to the EDC?
No.
So it's not, it's going to stay within the borough?
Yes.
Okay, and at this point, what's the longest this could set until something is really done with it? After the first phase?
It depends on how long we.
We decide.
Decide to let the RFP out there getting proposals.
Okay, just curious.
I mean, I think we're hedging on about six months for the RFP process.
Yeah, that's what I kind of thought too. I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
All right, anything else on this? All right, and then finally, we have COA for 22 North Third Street. This was the HARB recommended approval with the conditions that the exterior door be a glass door, the two windows that are currently covered be reopened, and the wall to the left of the door in the setback be a glass wall. Questions? Do you have any? I do. So I didn't see in here, I didn't see in the documentation, the letter from the Historic Preservation Trust on this. Our ordinance for HARB says that the certified staff will review the application and they will determine the appropriateness, the determination shall be based upon the standards as well as design guidelines contained, if we have any. And certified staff shall forward the written report to HARB members, which will then be used during the hearing. So do we have, do we have that report from the Preservation Trust? Then how did HARB make a determination without what's required in our ordinance? I don't understand that. I mean, we just had this.
I thought we just went over this.
We just went over this at the last, at last month. There was no, there was no thing. I mean, I don't feel comfortable making the decision on this if I don't know, if I don't have what's required in our ordinance.
Can somebody help me out with this? I'm confused on the location of this property. I know it's down the alley.
Yeah, it's behind Stover's.
That's where Stover's used to put the newspaper cards.
Right, I know where it is, I'm just, I'm confused as far as, I've gone to the street view.
I thought, and I had that concern as well. It's, if it's street view, is this truly covered by HARB? I mean, technically you can see it from.
The street.
From Third Street.
But not in front of the address.
But not in front of the address. This is the same situation we had on South Fifth Street.
Right.
That one at the, at the thing.
So to clarify, streets are technically, alleys are not streets?
No.
So.
It's the property address.
The property address.
Right, it's street view of the property address.
So.
So like roofs aren't covered if you're standing on the street. I mean, you know, the front of them, you can't.
You can't see the roof, but yeah, I mean.
Based on that analogy, there's no need for this application.
Well, exactly. Like, I mean, we went through this down on South Second Street with the balconies. Like, should this truly be covered? And I think without the weigh-in from the Historic Preservation Trust, you know, I don't know that.
But if this, if this doesn't qualify, we wouldn't even consult the Historic Preservation Trust because it doesn't.
Exactly.
It wouldn't have sent that far.
If this is designated as a true historic representation of its time building and they give it, because they're going to grade each historic property in Columbia, and depending on its grade, you could fight that argument that you could see that from the street. So it is significant, you know, help itself significance, but we don't have that report. So the only thing I had to go on is saying it's not in front of the street.
Right, but I'm saying from a staff level, if an application comes in and.
Well, that's the zoning, the zoning officer's.
Call whether.
Call whether or not it.
You can see it from the street.
Right, whether or not it needs, and I don't know who made the determination that this had to go to HARB. And I don't know who made the determination that this had to go to HARB. But if it was determined that it had to go to HARB, then we should have the report as well. So. I mean, I'm gonna go out on limb here, and I would say that we're not voting on this until we have answers, correct? I mean, I personally don't feel comfortable voting on something that we don't even know, number one, if we should be voting on it, number two, you know, we're not complying with the ordinance by approving it because we don't have.
I don't think that garage door is historical.
Well, no, I don't think so either, but. But what's proposed needs to comply with. Do you know what I mean? Like.
Know what you mean.
I mean, last time, we were all concerned about the wall and. Preservation Trust said they don't care about the wall, they cared about the the porch. So, you know, I mean, who who knows? That that's why we pay them the money to tell us what is important and what's not.
Can you tell us the process that you followed in submitting the application? How did you know to submit it to HARB?
That would be Matt Peake. I contacted him.
So you initiated the contact to him and you asked him, is this?
What process I needed to go through to get that approved. And that was the first step that I was told.
And how did you know that your your building qualified in the historical district and that portion of your building?
I didn't, that's that's why I went to them. Yeah, because it is in the historic district. So for them, that was just a broad.
And where are the windows that were covered up?
You can see where.
That one on the picture right next to the garage door.
Yeah, you can see that, but I don't remember what it was.
So realistically, we would actually be restoring that portion of it for the most part. So it's historic.
Right, that's what I was kind of getting at, right?
Did you have a start date scheduled?
Now, rather than that approval.
I prefer we wait. I'll wait to make it legitimate. I think we're all probably fair of voting for it anyway.
Sure.
But we didn't follow our steps properly, and we want to try and follow our steps properly.
Could you make contingent on receipt of that letter from the?
I don't want to do that because what if they, what if, you know, they completely.
They say that garage door is historic.
Yeah.
I I don't disagree, it's not my place to say that, though.
Right, and.
Well, then we'd cross that bridge when we got there, not. If they if they would say, no, the garage door is historic, we'd have to bring it back and discuss whether we were gonna.
Do you guys know what qualifies as historic here? Like, a date or anything?
No, there is no date.
Because that's an addition. That isn't actually part of the the building from the early eighteen hundreds.
Right.
That was the telecom company. That was an addition mid-fifties.
If you have, if you have a nineteen fifty-four single-family one-level rancher, that's your standard.
Okay.
If you have an eighteen ninety-five brick Victorian, that's your standard. So it's standard over the time period.
So that wouldn't then quantify being historic, right?
It's it's quantified being historic because it's in the district. So if that was built in two thousand eight, you'd have to follow two thousand eight standard.
So it's historic pending on to the date of its construction.
Right, really.
Original construction.
That's really what they're asking for.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
And if you were right, that it's the street address, the front of the building on that street, and it just wasn't even necessary for him to apply, and any fees that I think they paid in the application should be restored.
Funded, absolutely.
I'm sure it would, but that's.
Right.
So that's the same address as the front of the building? It's not like a separate.
It's a one partial, so it would be.
I understand that, yeah. What you're trying to do is follow the process.
I think this, I mean, you could make a really good argument that this is visible from the street because of the open parking lot.
Okay, well, right, but I made that same argument on South Fifth Street where it was curved, and you could clearly see the back of it from from Fifth Street, and I was told no because you stand and you look straight on.
Well, then it's just the facade.
That's what that's what the historic district is, the true facade.
Okay, well, this isn't the facade.
Right.
Then I I don't think this is a, I don't think, I don't think that it needs to go through this.
Well, I know, but we're, but on that vein, we are not a zoning officer.
I know, but if we've.
To actually make that determination, so.
If we've been instructed.
Right.
In the past, can we go off of that instruction?
And shouldn't HARB have known that?
I say follow the process.
HARB should have known that, but, I mean, I don't know, I didn't listen to the HARB meeting. Maybe they.
I think their position is if it's brought to them.
They're gonna vote on it.
They're gonna review it and make recommendations.
But they told them to bring it to them.
No, HARB did not tell them to bring it through.
He said they did.
Zoning did.
Zoning did, not HARB.
Who was the man's name again?
Not me.
Oh, okay.
No, the documents there were viewed by an architect and an engineer.
Yeah, you put you put time on this, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, she did everything right.
Yeah, you you did everything right. This is purely about our process and.
And she waited the whole meeting.
I know. Yeah. I I don't feel comfortable.
Follow the process.
Voting on this if, number one, we can't say for sure that it should have come to us, and two, we don't have the the fourteenth is the next voting meeting.
We can get five out of sure, can't we?
Yeah.
Put it first.
Yep.
And if it's, if the historic recommendation says this doesn't apply, then the zoning can just get a hold of that and take.
Well, our zoning officer, our zoning officer has to look at the standards and say.
Yeah.
Is it even? A questionable thing.
Right.
Yeah, it, yeah, the zoning officer needs to look at it and say, should this actually go to HARB? Should we be, you know, is this covered by our ordinance? Because it's not visible looking straight on the street or however the.
And if that's the case, it doesn't even need to come back to us.
Right, if that's the case, it doesn't even need to come back to us.
Yeah.
Just gets approved.
That's how I look at it.
Me, too. All right. Latest you will know is October fourteenth. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're clear on what we need to know, number one. Does, should this have gone to HARB? And does it need? Does it need a COA? And if so, we need the determination from Historic Preservation Trust to show what standards and all that stuff that they do, that they give us.
I got it.
All right, thank you, sorry about that. All right. That's the end of that. Uh, staff reports, comments, and announcements, Slister Gable. Oh, you're in the sinking chair?
Yeah, I'm in the sinking chair, one of the sinking chairs. I don't have too much more to add tonight other than that while I was sitting here waiting for the meeting to come through, I did get an email from the attorney for Norfolk Southern. They have a, they presented another form back to the, to JG Environmental. Hopefully, we will have that taken care of shortly. I did speak with them earlier this week, and they are aware that if this does not happen here very, very quickly, that we are preparing a market rate lease, I'm working on that now, and we're gonna, we're gonna have to get that into effect. So I'm really hoping that that Norfolk Southern can get this taken care of, get you guys paid for the sale of that property, and get JG, you know, taken care of, so we're not dealing with this anymore. So just wanted to give you a brief update on that.
Well, I want the market rate lease in effect no later than November one.
Got it, absolutely.
Because this is, it's ridiculous.
Yes.
I mean, they're making money on that property.
Hold on a second.
Can't we do it in retrospect?
No, 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 hold on, I I have a problem with that statement. We put in the lease that they can sell this.
Right, but we also put in the lease that if they occupy or use more than forty percent of the property, it transfers to a market rate lease. They are using more than forty percent of the property.
I wasn't aware of that, that's fine.
Yeah, that's the, that's the kicker there.
Okay, that makes sense.
So how long have they been using more than forty percent of the property?
Months.
I would say a while, yeah, it's not been short.
Or can there be a a retros, in retrospect?
Retroactive.
Retroactively.
I I wouldn't say so, and I think that would. I think something like that might affect the the deal that you really want, which is the sale of the property.
I mean, it's bad enough we haven't been charging them for the utilities and stuff. We also haven't been charging them for the the property tax, like we should have been, none of that.
Well, is that written in the lease?
Yes. It was, it was written as a triple net zero lease, they pay everything.
If it's written in the lease and it was agreed upon in the past, so therefore, when the conditions of the lease are met, then it is, needs to be billed that way.
Some of that stuff, I think you could potentially get that money back because they should have been paying that. It's not like we weren't sure when they got to the forty percent. It's that was in the lease and that should have been, you know, sent to, I don't know, if they just weren't invoiced for those things or what, if it was.
So Ron and I, so be aware of this. We do have a meeting scheduled for Monday with the EDC to address this specific issue in addition to just weighing out where they stand on, you know, the property moving forward. So we will address this on Monday.
Work that into the sale. That gets them moving a little faster.
Yeah, that's possible, absolutely, you have those things stated, I don't think.
Yeah, you uh, you owe us this much money, but we can do this if you settle this.
How about Ron and I talk, you walk on?
Yeah, we can, absolutely, yeah. That's all I have, pretty much.
All right. Um. Engineer Valdo. You've been quiet tonight. All right. Secretary Treasurer, Mr. Brawler.
I just wanted to introduce Ron Yutz, the Assistant Manager to Council and also the community, and ask Ron to talk a little bit about his work experience. And we are so grateful to have him here. He has been a tremendous asset and, you know, I know it was difficult for us to ramble him out of retirement, but he he's certainly been working very hard and over sort of what we've accomplished and worked on in a moment over the last two weeks.
I think I met most of you in some moments just this evening, but thanks for the opportunity. A little bit of my background, I was born and raised in Columbia and grew up in Columbia. I graduated from Columbia High School. Moved around a few yachts early in my career and started my municipal government career with the Borough in nineteen eighty-two. I was hired as a highway maintenance worker. I believe it was around nineteen eighty-five, I was promoted to Highway Foreman and served in that capacity until the early nineties. It was actually at the time that the building was renovated, when I was appointed as the first Public Works Director of the Borough. A lot more administrative work at that point, and kind of overseeing a lot of what was happening here when the building was renovated, including relocating departments into other buildings so we could continue to operate. So it was an interesting time. In ninety-five, I left the Borough to become an employee of West Temfield Township. I served there for thirteen years as their Public Works Director. And in two thousand and eight, I was appointed as Township Manager for West Temfield Township Manager and also served as Secretary Treasurer. I served the township as Township Manager for eight years. And in twenty sixteen, I accepted a position in Chester County as Public Works for second-class township there and worked at that position until the end of twenty twenty-two, when both my wife and I had the opportunity to do that. That's a little bit of my background, my journey through different phases of municipal government. Been doing retirement for the last two and a half, almost three years, until I got contacted from the Borough and asked if I could commit an assist. So I came in, met the Leo and Heather, Barbara, Jack. We kind of outlined some things of what they were looking for and what I was able to do based on my availability. Again, it's kind of a temporary part-time situation. Have some family traveling that we're doing on and off through the fall. But I'm looking forward to it. And anyway, Ken, over the next few months, and we get through this transition.
Ron's primary focus right now is the budget, and we are extremely grateful to the staff. They have been extremely supportive and responsive to us, so we can't thank them enough.
I can share with that, it's 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 been a real pleasure that anything we need, we've been able to get fairly readily, while we kind of get a hit around what we have and what the goals and objectives are looking forward to get a great budget for you in a timely manner.
Here's a summary of some of the work that we've accomplished over the last, well, less than two weeks. We met with Bill Cloyde with the Columbia Economic Development Corporation. He's the director to learn about the initiatives, you know, for that organization. We met with Rick Brenneman to tour the McGinnis worksite and obtain an update on the project. We also participated in a project meeting for McGinnis. We met with Phil Martin to discuss insurance coverage and obtain budget numbers. We also met with Bonnie Lee to visit the market house and also discuss the operations of the market. We had numerous meetings with staff to discuss and prepare the two thousand twenty-six budget. We met with about ten to fifteen percent of the staff so far in one-on-one or one-on-two meetings. So we're sitting down with each and every staff member, and we will get that accomplished at at some point in time. But as I indicated, we met with about ten to fifteen percent so far. We met with the accounting firm Browns to discuss Borough finances. We met with the Borough Solicitor as well, Evan Gable, to go over some pending projects. We met with Lifeline Ambulance as well and met with RJ Hall, the Borough's pension fiduciary, to go over the police pension, Borough pension, and the four fifty-seven plans. And lastly, I had the pleasure of working at the market this past Saturday. And that was a wonderful experience. I got a chance to go around and meet many of the vendors and hear from them, you know, their ideas, different thoughts they have on things. So I would say we've been busy. So, do you have any questions at all?
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, upcoming meetings. There's nothing the rest of this month. In your packet, you have approved minutes from the Civil Service Commission from August twelfth and Parks and Rec from August fourteenth. Borough Council comments, Councilperson Stall.
Nothing, thank you.
Good meeting tonight, I've discussed.
Nothing, thank you.
We don't have another meeting?
No. No.
These are the best minutes.
Five Tuesdays this month.
No, I have nothing to discuss.
Councilperson Husho?
I'd just like to make a comment and I really appreciate the openness and the communication. Jack, just seeing these past few weeks, just keeping everything up to date for us. So I really appreciate that.
Want to work some more?
I have nothing, thank you.
I have nothing this evening. The announcement of next meeting at seven PM on Tuesday, October seventh, Council will hold a workshop. Initially, we said it was going to be a budget meeting. It will be an abbreviated budget meeting in that we will be hearing from the community organizations requesting funding, but we will not have a grand budget to look at until the, the budget meeting. I put the date on that, October sixteenth. So that's where we're at on that. We have reached out to all of the candidates for council to invite them to the budget meetings so they can see how all this is done and why we're, why we're doing the things that we are and where the numbers are coming from. But I have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Councilperson Eazy, second by Councilperson Kaufman, to adjourn at nine thirty-two PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? We're adjourned.
Yes, dear.
So we have checks to sign.